Hi, I'm Jim Small and I'm running for state assembly in District 2. I grew up and still with the values of hard work, giving back to the community and spending money wisely. District 2 wants a representative in Carson City that will fight high taxes and regulations that hurt businesses and the livelihood of everyday Nevadans. I have carried those values all of my life and I have the necessary experience to do the job. My name is Jim Small and I'm running to be your Assemblyman in District 2. Remember, think big, vote small. Paid for by Jim for Nevada.
We're back. This is Steve Sands and Kia Bonz for Veterans and Politics. We have two guests today. Our first guest is going to be Katie Williams, candidate for Clark County School Board District B. And then our second guest is going to be Herb Nelson, candidate for Nevada's Supreme Court. Kia, you got them?
Um, no, just did a little bit of research, so kind of excited to talk to some of you, ask you some questions. Holy softball questions, sorry.
Katie Williams.
I'm good, how are you, Steve?
Good, I'm good. Tell us a little bit about you.
So I have been in the military for 13 years. So I was originally born in Utah.
Thank you for your story.
Thank you. So I was originally born in Utah, Salt Lake City, Utah, and I grew up there until I was about 13. And then I moved to Southern Illinois and graduated high school there. Joined the military, deployed to Afghanistan, came back, met my husband, had a daughter, and then we actually moved out here to Las Vegas a couple of years ago. And yeah, I mean, that's pretty much in a nutshell what it is. I'm a very outspoken social media personality. I get into a lot of trouble sometimes. Uh, well, what do you want to know?
What was?
Uh, so I was an 88 Mike, but I was also able to kind of flip-flop a little bit, go back and forth between being a gunner, working on a personal security detail. So that was cool because I got to meet General Petraeus while he was still in the military. I got to carry his dress blues and like those are like the heaviest things I've ever carried in my life because you don't want to drop them, so you're just like, you know, and I'm 19 years old and I'm like, "Don't drop the general's uniform."
Did you meet Petraeus?
I did meet Petraeus, yeah, so it was cool.
And met Stormin' Norman.
Oh, wow, yeah, I don't think he'd remember me. Like if I ever like saw him face-to-face again, he probably wouldn't remember, you know.
I'm close to meeting, um, what's his name, Powell?
Oh, General Powell?
Yeah.
Really?
Came close to me.
Because he used to be, oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know, I'd be really intimidated with that. I'd be intimidated by that guy. Because he was just, he just had that demeanor, like you just wanted to impress him, you know?
Really?
Yeah, you don't think so? Okay, well, maybe it was because I was 19 and like I was an E4 and so it was like, you know, anyone over the eight, like probably the rank of Colonel, I was just like, "Don't talk to me."
Were you a beauty queen or something?
Well, I mean, I think I'm beautiful, of course, so. No, no, so I was actually in Ms. Veteran America in 2014. And I got, I was ranked in the top nation of 25 and then I lost out a top 10, which was a bummer, but that was okay because I could change my shoes, so I was really happy about that. And then, yeah, and then I was actually in the Ms. America pageant last year and I was awarded the title of Ms. Nevada and I was supposed to go and actually compete and then I actually got disqualified about a week prior to going. So I can't. No, I knew, I knew, I knew it was coming, but it's okay. So I, I can't say for sure why they didn't want me in, but why I think is because I'm a very outspoken political person and I like to speak my mind. I like to, you know, have good conversations and thought-provoking and I'm a little bit sassy, right? So, so I think that was really what kind of threw a bunch of people off and they just, about four days before I went to, what was it, in Long Beach, they disqualified me.
You met Snoop Dogg?
I did not meet Snoop Dogg, that would be so cool though.
Yeah, he's down in Long Beach.
No, I didn't get to go.
Oh, you didn't get to?
No, I told you it was like four days prior.
Oh, okay.
She, she listens. Must be a woman thing, we listen.
You're running for Clark County School Board District B.
Yes.
You know, that school board's been in the news.
Yes, it has.
A whole bunch of times.
Yes, they have.
Trying to find a superintendent and the superintendent's been fine, all of a sudden, the superintendent's really wasn't working out.
Right.
They paid too much for the superintendent.
I think they paid way too much for the superintendent.
Like there's a whole lot of craziness going on. I think the superintendent has too much power, what do you think?
I agree. Um, I think, I, I think that there's, no, no school board is perfect. Like you can go into any major city, into any little district or any little small town and you'll see that there are just things that people just don't agree with. But that being said, you're also never going to make everyone happy. So even if you're the very, very tip-top, you're going to have people that support you and you're going to have people that are always looking down on you at the same thing. So I think the superintendent here, if you look at the COVID response, I think he did the best job he knew how, but I wish that he was a little bit more active with it instead of just kind of echoing a lot of different things.
You know, speaking of that COVID, they said 67,000 Clark County students is unaccounted for.
Yeah, so.
Couldn't get lessons.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that number?
I, I was really, I was really, you know, we have, I think this, I think the number is right around 323,000 students in, in the whole district, right, which is a lot, right? And the district's trying their best to get in contact with every single one of them. What I would have liked to see is, and now they're doing it, they're doing it now, but in the first few weeks, I would have liked to see these, these teachers and administrators going to these houses and, you know, knock on the door, take six feet back and just say, "Where's your son or daughter?" Like we need to know that they're alive, that they're okay, that they're actually checking in somehow, some way. Because, you know, like I told you a couple of weeks ago, I said, "My fear is that when school comes back in session, that these 67,000 students, you know, maybe, maybe 30,000 of them don't come. They just, they stop coming, they stop showing up." Or, you know, God forbid, something worse happened to them and they're, and they're gone, you know?
So was the reason for that because most of the classes were online and they actually have to check in?
Right.
So were those students not provided with laptops or the iPads?
Well, so you think, I mean, they, they haven't, they didn't get Chromebooks for quite a while and not, and not every student has the internet capabilities, right? We just have some students that are in low-income areas and low-income families, they just, they just don't have it, you know? But this was more so as the initial context, they couldn't get a hold of students via email or phone call or anything like that. And so what I would have liked to see, and maybe it's just my military background and, you know, just beat feet to the ground and like go to that person's house and like, "Where's your son? Where's your daughter?" You know? Because if they don't know, someone's got to know, we'll find them eventually.
Do you think it could have been organized a little bit better initially?
Well, I think, I think they did the best they could with how they knew it. But I think once they realized they weren't getting those responses back from students and parents, they should have been at their houses. You know, no one was, no one was prepared for COVID, right? We were not prepared for an entire economic shutdown as we can clearly so see that it's just, you know, it's destroying our economy. Was it 20 million applications for unemployment went out within the first couple of weeks? That's one of the highest things we've ever seen since, you know, the Great Depression. But I think that this has shown a lot of weaknesses in a lot of different organizations and I think people will kind of build from this, I hope.
Right.
So.
You know, there was a few legislations ago, they were giving us the ESA. It was a school choice.
Yeah.
To go into the private school. And apparently the ACLU, I believe, is the one that compaged on it.
Yeah, they did.
And stopped it because they felt that those ESAs was going to be used for religious schools, which I didn't.
I mean, it could have been, I guess.
Because a lot of schools out there, a lot of these private schools, they, they only teach a small portion.
Right.
Religion, so it didn't really matter. Plus, they're really harder than the public schools as far as the curriculum is concerned.
Well, I think that's because they go into different programs, right? Where public schools don't necessarily teach theology, private schools do, you know?
So do you, do you, do you agree with the ESAs? Do you think that we should have school choice?
I do. I, I am a big supporter of school choice and that was one of my things, that was one of the top five things that I said I was going to do when getting elected to the board was just to bring that conversation into play. Because how it works is that the government gives school districts money for every student they have. Say, say, you know, we have 100 students and each student is worth $10,000. Like those are just numbers, I don't know. Because they vary, right? They vary based on age and education and system and everywhere they go, right? And then it goes to the school district and the school district disperses it. What I want is I want these parents to have the power to say, "This is a Title I school and this is a Title V school and I would like my student to go to this school because it is the best education for them. I don't care that it's 45 minutes out of my way, I'll take them," right? Because as parents, like I have a daughter, she's four years old, I just want the best for her, you know? And instead of me having to pay $9,000, $10,000 a year in private tuition, I'd rather just be able to use my tax money that I pay every single year and send her to the school of my choice.
Couple of sessions ago, legislative, they said if you, if you went ahead and you passed this recreational marijuana bill, because marijuana was already medical. If you passed the recreational marijuana bill, they were going to use that money to fund education and the teachers were going to get a pay raise.
Marijuana teachers, that sounds like a combo right there.
This is definitely a sore subject for me. I, I have a couple of good friends who are teachers in private care facilities that didn't fall under the stimulus package, right? So, you know, they're still waiting on unemployment benefits and things like that. You know, I think that teachers in general need a raise because I just don't understand how, I mean, I deal with my daughter for eight hours a day, 24 hours a day, and I'm just like, "No, you're right, teachers deserve better." And my daughter's pretty well-behaved, but, you know, I think sometimes that, you know, most of these kids are teaching themselves.
Right, well, I mean, plus you have the behavior factor with kids today and, you know, I come from a long line of teachers and professors. And so definitely underpaid.
Yeah.
And underappreciated.
Well, and then if you look at the district too, I actually was on a forum and it was CCSD Parents and I had said, "There are 5,300 administrators in the Clark County School District that make over $100K, not a single one of them is a teacher," right? And they're like, "Well, that's not true." You know, with benefits, health benefits, 401K, they make over. And I was like, "No, I want teachers to take home more money," right?
How much you think teachers should be allowed to make?
I think even with the military, right, that's kind of what I base myself off of, is, you know, the longer you're in, the more experience you have, the more degrees you have, like absolutely. Because if you look at nurses, right, nurses never are allowed to stop educating themselves, right? They constantly have to go through.
Well, it's the same, it's the same thing with lawyers and therapists.
If a teacher is willing to put themselves back into education and back into recertifications for certain things, I have no problem with giving them more money because they are spending their entire time.
How much you think teachers should make?
Uh, well, I don't think they should start at $39,000 a year. That's too, that's too low. Maybe for a teacher's aide, assistant, like that, I'm cool with that. But I think we have to look at that step, you know? Because I think the most senior teacher now makes about $90,000, which is great, but she's probably been there for 35 years.
So how are you going to get this marijuana money that was originally supposed to be used for teacher salaries?
Well, the first part about that is just getting the rest of the board members on board because what you have to do is lobby the government and be like, "Listen, this money was meant for..."
Yeah, but that's what it's supposed to be for originally. So why, why do we need to have a conversation about it?
Oh, I don't want to have a conversation.
That was their original plan, right?
You know, I think, you know, in, in politics, you know this, right? You have to work around things, you have to be tactful about it because I could go in there guns-a-blazing, you know, Katie Williams was just like, "Hey, this money goes to the district, why is the money not going to the district?" And those are the questions that need to be asked. And I think that we need to just, I think more so just kind of, I don't want to say beat it out of them, that's not, that's not the word, but like verbally like, "Hey, listen, every single day that you refuse to give this money to the district, I will, I will be speaking to you, every single day," you know?
Do you think there should be some sanctions on the state for not releasing that money?
Absolutely, and I think that's where the teachers' union should actually be coming into it and saying, "Listen, this money was meant for the district, why is it going to these other branches of government? Why is it going to these other offices?" And they're hiding it.
It's in a rainy day fund.
Right, and they're hot, but they're hiding.
It doesn't rain out here, hardly.
It's not true, it rains.
Hardly.
Maybe a little or two. You know, they said that it never snowed out here and two years ago, when I first moved out here, it snowed. And I was so mad.
It snows more often now, it really does. I've been here since 2010 and, yeah.
They said, they're like, "It hasn't snowed in like a decade and you move out here and all of a sudden there's snow." I'm like, "Brought the snow with you."
I know.
So Ms. Williams, what's the boundaries for District B?
Uh, so really, if you look at a map, there's like up by 95 and it comes down to Lone Mountain and a little bit on Craig Road and then goes all the way out to Mesquite and Logan Dale and every like.
Oh, you have Mesquite as well?
Yeah, it's huge, I mean, it's huge area. And what's nice about that.
Have you been up to Mesquite?
I have, yeah. I actually, when I was a recruiter, I used to go up to Mesquite and Logan Dale. We did the Logan Dale County Fair when I was a recruiter.
Did you meet the mayor up there?
I did not get to meet the mayor, but I, I did, I did go to Mooppa Valley High School quite a bit.
He's a friend of mine, so you should go up there and meet him.
It's the thing, I didn't lie, huh? But yeah, so it's very nice. I like the fact that District B is so broad because you have a lot of urban schools, you have a lot of inner-city schools, and then you also have these country schools that are just out there. And, you know, it's not, nobody thinks alike and nobody acts the same and so I think it's really nice, it's a good broad area.
There was a couple of legislations ago, I, I was asking some legislators if they were willing to privatize the transportation, the school bus, privatize the cafeteria. Do, do you think that those items should be privatized or contracted out? Or do you think that the schools should be in the business of transporting kids back and forth and feeding them?
Well, I think it, I think it kind of depends on the situation, right? Because in the government, we use government contracts all the time. The problem with government contracts is that we'll send out a contract and we'll get all these bids back and then we typically go whichever one's the cheapest, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean it's the best quality.
Right.
And that's where I worry about maybe privatizing some of these things. I think, you know, I believe in capitalism and I believe in going for the lowest bidder but the best quality work. I'm fine with that, but I think that it should be a case-by-case basis. I don't think we should automatically just privatize everything, but I do think that, I think it could help out a lot, you know? The problem with that though is that sometimes it does cost a lot more money and if we can shave a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars by doing it in-house, but it's still quality work, then I have no problem with that.
When former trustee Kevin Childs was on the school board, he was trying to get a forensic audit. And the forensic audit is, is a complete investigation of every monies. Do you think that we need to have a forensic audit?
Yes, yes, so I actually.
You know, that's one of the reasons they got rid of him because he wanted one of those.
I know, I'm probably one of the loudest people running for this position.
And why do you think we need a forensic audit?
Uh, because I think that a lot of things get hidden, you know? I mean, so on the public website, you can see like, oh, you know, $100,000 went to this and $100,000 went to this and $400,000 went to this. So you can see it, it's labeled out there, but where did it really go? You know, I want to see where it really went. Is it just hiding behind bus repairs, but it really went to, you know, to a bonus check somewhere? Or, you know, you know what I mean? And those things are hard to figure out, you know? Because I actually said this, I said, "One of the first things I'd like to do is just a really big audit and just to see every single thing." Like I want to see if $100,000 went to school books, I want to see the school books that it went to. You know, I want to see the bills, I want to see the receipts and I think those are important. You know, I almost got laughed out of the forum room because they were like, "Well, it's already online." I'm like, "Is it though?" You know? I mean, I'm not saying there's big conspiracies, but I wouldn't be who I was if I didn't question things at first sight.
Well, when you have teachers who are having to buy their own supplies, you know, and the parents are bringing things in and teachers are asking for things, there's obviously misappropriation of funds somewhere.
Yeah, and I agree, and I actually said this too, you know, with the superintendent. In 2019, if you add up his benefits and his bonuses, he made $432,000 for 20.
And he doesn't even live in Nevada.
Yeah, and I said, I said this to them, I said, "Why does..." They're like, "Well, do you think he's not worth that much?" I said, "I don't know what his qualifications are, but no, I don't think he is." You know, I was like, I said, "He technically is getting paid more than the leader of the free world," right? You know, I mean, like regardless of where they're, you know, he gets paid more than the Secretary of Education.
And, and his wife lives in Florida.
Yeah, well, so Betsy DeVos made $392,000 last year, right? But she is in charge of the entire, you know, the federal level and she donated her salary, right? And granted, they all, they're all independently wealthy anyway. But to me, I'm like, our current school board in 2019, not for, you know, not for Dr. Harra, but for the position of superintendent, allowed a pay increase to $320,000, right? So then 2019, his entire benefits plus his salary was $432,000. And I'm like, "That's insane to me." And, and so when I say, you know, "I'm donating my salary, it's not, it's only $9,000 a year, I understand." People are like, you know, at me all the time, they're like, "Well, it's only $9,000, what difference does it make?" I'm like, "Because I know for a fact that if that money comes to me, I know where I'm going to put it."
Right.
Right? It's not going to go to administrators, it's not going to get routed through things. It will go to the teachers, it will go to the students, it will go to these programs that need to be funded that clearly are not.
So last year I exposed a superintendent about his Pendleton bike that he has.
The Palaton?
It was the Palaton, yes, it's the Palaton bike. Which costs, what, $2,400?
Yeah, I think, I think depending on the model, it could go all the way to $4,000.
And plus, that's what we paid for it as taxpayers to, to have this bike for him.
What do you think about like school lunch?
Well, I'm still on the Pendleton bike there, so.
I'll remember, I promise.
So anyways, his PR person came back and I forgot what news was covering it and, and said that he needed it because of stress. So I'm thinking about it and a lot of these teachers, they're stressed too. Should they have one in their classroom, you think?
I mean, if we're going to go with, yeah, I mean, I think that, first off, it's such a crock. I'm sorry, like, excuse my language, it probably is, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not the best well-spoken person, but I know better. I mean, it's free to run outside, people.
Or use offer-up.
Or get a bike. I mean, I bought, I bought a used bike a couple of years ago. This is back in Illinois and it was probably $400 bucks. And it works, I still have it, it's awesome. I think I had to fix the screen, that was about it.
So apparently all these items is in his contract. Do you think that these, the current super, sorry, the current school board trustees, do you think they really, really took a look at that contract before?
I don't think they care.
They don't, it's not their money, right?
If I'm being frank, I don't, you're right, it's not.
So if they were paying for this bike, I bet you they, they wouldn't put that in the contract.
You know, Lola Brooks said something, I was watching one of her forums and she said, she's like, "I wish people understood how much time we actually put into this job." And I'm like.
Then why is she running again for it?
Why are you running again? Yeah, exactly, I mean, that's, that's a good question for her, you know, to answer. But my biggest thing is like, you ran for this position in order to, and they, she said, you know, and I have a screenshot of it, but it was like, you know, "We don't get paid as much as we should because, for the work that we do." I was like.
Then leave!
You don't get paid at all, right? I'm, I'm sorry, but like that's, that's not your job to say, "Hey, we need more money or we need this" or anything like that. Your job, the whole reason why you should have ran in the first place is for these kids, right? And everyone is thinking the same thing, you know? And to me, that's one of the reasons why I'm giving up my salary, right? Because I don't have any ties to unions, I don't have any ties to organizations, I don't have any ties to any businesses and I'm not going to get paid, right? No one can tell me what to do at that point.
True.
I would do what I need to do to get the job done for these students because there are so many kids that get left by the wayside. I think we were talking about couch-surfing students, right? Where they go from home to home to home to home because they have no one involved. And I want those kids involved and I want to bring their parents back. And I know there's a lot of issues in the district and it's not just the education system, right? The criminal system, it's the legal system, there's, there's all these different broken cracks in our systems. But if I can help fix one, or if I can make a little bit better, or if I can impact someone's life in order to start getting into these systems, then I've done my job. You know, and that, and that's where I want to be at with this whole thing.
You were talking about school lunches.
Yeah, because I was just curious because, you know, talking about all the money that they waste. Yeah, like why are school lunches, do you think, not free for everyone?
You know, I don't know, I think it's kind of different. I mean, obviously schools have to pay for that, but if, if I think the forensic audit, I think if we really dove deep into it, I think we really could get kids' school lunches because this was one of the things.
You think that's why they don't want a forensic audit? Because they know it's going to uncover some stuff?
They're going to find all this stuff and they know that. And maybe not necessarily the, the lower-level administrators like, you know, I mean, the secretary at the high school is not going to, she's not going to realize or he's not going to realize what's going on, but these people at the high levels, right? You know, people on school board, superintendent, they're going to see, they're going to see, you know, they're going to get called out on it and, you know, they're going to have to fix it. And they don't want to do that because they're going to lose thousands and thousands of dollars.
Well, they, they said a lot of these bids to build schools were going to a lot of friends in the construction industry. And it wasn't open up to the whole, you know, the whole of Clark County that bid on it.
That's the whole problem, right? I mean, we can't have a good old boy system, you know, sort of speak, to, to, you know, make our economy what it is. Our economy is what it is because it's a free market, right? I'm going to go with the lowest bidder at the best quality of work, regardless. I don't care who you are, I don't care where you come from, I don't care what kind of business you do, I don't care if our politics don't match up, can you do the work for this price? Awesome.
Do you, do you know why the trustees are, and the superintendent for that matter, is violating the open meeting law continuously?
Yeah, I think, I've heard their excuses on, "Oh, we have, we have time constraints, we have schedules." But I mean, I've talked to you about this before.
So here's the thing, right, here's the thing, and I like, I like, I like the excuse that, that they were giving you.
Yeah.
So I got to pee, right?
All right.
Really bad.
Okay.
There's a red light, could I blow it? Could I go right through it? Because I got to go potty?
No, no, I'm on the side of that. I remember when they did, they.
You know what I'm saying? So they're, they're violating the, the open meeting law because they got all these excuses.
Because they all want to leave, and yeah, I, I'm with you on that. And I remember saying this to you, like, "I don't care, like you under, like you understand, take a recess, right? Take a recess, do what you got to do, 10-minute recess, let everybody go out, get some water, you know, do whatever you do." But you're there until the meeting is done.
Right, I mean, you make the money for that.
That's, that is your, that's your job.
Exactly, you're right.
And if you don't like it, resign or, or don't, or don't apply.
Exactly, but I said this too, you know, I had, I had one of the other candidates call me and, and we had a great conversation and they asked me, they said, "Do you think that some people in this race are running just for social status?" I said, "Absolutely." You know, and people were like, "Well, you want to go into politics, nor are you running this for social status." I'm like, "No, that's why I'm not getting paid, that's why I'm not taking a paycheck." Because I want to do it because I care about it, not because I want to go into politics, I love politics, but really I want to go into policy writing because I'm a nerd and I like to read, so.
So what would you do different if you were a school board trustee?
I'd probably be the loudest one there, you know? I think, I think that most of the board members now currently don't agree with me politically or personally. And it would be a long uphill battle, for sure, over the next four years. The only thing that I can hope is that we get some new people in there who maybe don't agree with me 100%, but maybe can agree with me on certain issues or certain things. Or maybe they can just take a step back and look at things objectively and just say, "Hey, listen, what we've been doing over the last 12 years has not been working, right? If we don't change it, it's still not going to work." You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result every time.
So what policies would you implement that would change that we're not doing that?
Well, unfortunately with policies, like I can only suggest them.
Right, what would you suggest? What would you suggest?
I want school choice opened up, I really do. I don't, I think that, especially with the open meeting law, like they have to keep those meetings open. I don't care if it takes six hours, then have a longer meeting. Like, I mean, that's basically what it.
How about when they cut off teachers and staff or anybody else, the public from speaking?
That really aggravates me because I think when people aren't used to being in front of a group of people, they kind of can't necessarily get their point across. And one thing I said this too, I actually got into a little Twitter argument with a current board member, Deanna Wright. And, uh, you know, and she's not up for reelection because she's termed out, but, you know, it is true this. But what I had said to her...
Let me ask you something before, before that thought, because, do you, do you have a degree?
I have an associate's degree in criminal justice and I actually finished my bachelor's this year in criminal justice and I'm going into my master's in constitutional law.
And, and a, a school board trustee, what, what's the purpose of them? What, what's the purpose of a school board trustee?
So, a school board...
Should they be smarter than everybody else, you think?
Uh, I don't, I don't necessarily think that. Um, I think that there should be a wide variety of different people from different backgrounds. That's what I think.
Do you think somebody, I mean, there's supposed to be a, a role model towards the students, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Kind of, yeah.
Here's the thing, the role models are persec, are, it's perspective, right? So like, what I view as a role model may not be your role model.
So with Deanna Wright, since you brought her name up, do you know that, I'm not, I'm not downplaying it...
I don't know her, I don't know her well, so I'm not...
Do, do you, do you, do you know that, that, that she, she got a GED and never really got an official high school diploma?
Well, see, and that, and so that was one of my things too. And so a lot of people ask me, they're like, well, what qualifies you to be on the board? I'm like, because I'm different, you know? I'm, I'm very, I'm different because if you keep electing the same people over and over and over again, you're getting nowhere, you know? And they're like, well, you have no background in education. I'm like, do I need one to do what's right?
Right.
You know, um, you know, but what I was going to say with her in, in talking about going against these policies, I would like to see these people do more live reactions with, with questions and comments and things like that because what they did, and they're like, we're going to do a Q and A and you can submit your questions to this email and then we'll read them. And I'm like, so I wrote on there, I said, I said, why not do it live so that you can answer questions as they come, right? Because people are going to ask those random questions.
Right, right.
And you can't vet them because now they're on a public forum, now people can see them. And she says, oh, okay, you know, and of course she called me a name. So, and so I was like, all right, sounds good. I said, but you know what? I said, if you'd have focused more on your school district during your last 12 years, then most of your schools would be rated above a two.
Right.
Exactly, right. But it's, and that's what it is, you know? There, I think most of them are, I, I, and that's what's hard, I don't want to say they're bad people because I don't think that. You know, I think maybe their priorities are a little bit mismanaged and I think that maybe they need to reevaluate that.
You know, I, I first came here in 95 and, um, the school district was always the fifth largest, but it always ranked in the, in the high 40s.
Yeah.
47, 48, 49, 50, out of all the 50 states that we have. Why do you think that is?
Uh...
In 20 something years, why do you think that is? It hasn't changed.
I think part of it is, like I said, priorities, right? You know, I mean, uh, the whole point of the tax money goes down to the labor unions and all those, or the teachers' unions, and the teachers' unions lobby for more money and then it just goes around and around in this big circle. But there's not focusing on education, which is out what helps rank these schools.
So, so for the superintendent's search that they have, how come they're always, majority of the time, go out of the Clark County School District to find somebody? They can't find anybody within the school district?
I couldn't speak for them, I don't know why they do that. I, I don't always agree that you have to hire in-house because I think that there is, I mean, there's a lot of skill work out there, there's a lot of skills that people have that we may not see. And then if you can hire someone outside of a source or outside of, outside of the thing, you know, maybe they'll be able to think of it differently than what we do, right? Because we can only see our scope. And if we're constantly looking in our scope, then we're, maybe we're missing something, you know? Um, so sometimes it's good to hire outside of the Clark County District. But, uh, I think that, that really needs to be evaluated. I don't think he's worth his weight, right? You know, at this point, I don't think $432,000 makes a lot of sense. And I don't understand why there aren't more angry parents about it.
Maybe they don't know.
That is, I mean, and that's the thing, it is listed, but it's not advertised.
Or they don't know how valuable their tax dollars are.
Oh, gosh. And that's, and that's what people don't understand. I mean, like, if we, if, if this quarantine has shown us anything, is that kids can learn at home, right? And if for some reason, we just, you know, said, hey, you know what, no more school, you know?
That's a lot of money in construction and staffing.
Man, if this district loses thousands, millions, you know, I mean, they're going to lose a ton of money.
And utilities.
They would, and they would absolutely lose it. And I think that's what this quarantine has shown us, is that there are a lot of things that we forgot to do, uh, forgot how to do.
Like teach kids how to...
Yeah.
Do keyboard.